Okay, hello, good evening everyone and welcome to the Town of Newcastle work session of Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. We have one topic of discussion for the work session today. We are going to discuss a low income senior exemption and persons with disabilities and limited income exemption. And we have Josh Herman, our town assessor, to discuss the new law that gives us an option to increase the exemption limit.
Thank you, thank you for having me talk to you guys about this tonight. Within the governor's twenty three twenty four executive budget, there were certain changes that were made to the low income senior and person with disabilities exemption. Mainly what we look at is the definition of income as well as the particular tax year that we are through here. So with regard to the change in income, this exemption is the most robust exemption that New York State offers. It's up to fifty percent, and it can be in school based on a sliding scale with a maximum income of fifty eight thousand three ninety nine. The major change was the difference between total income and now we are to look at federal adjusted gross income. So what that means is is we are able to take out with an option, the IRA distributions and any taxable social security. So the town board has a couple of decisions to make in this regard to what stays in, what comes out, and what impacts they will have for the assessables without them.
Well, before we get to that though, I want to ask you about the the law that we adopted last year, which increased the limits. Do you have a a tax impact for us? Because I remember last year you said that was not that was not accessible to you, you couldn't quite foresee and you were going to take the year to see what what happened, but um can you give us all an idea of the tax impact?
I can. So we we looked at that and we compared the twenty two assessment rules and the twenty three assessment rule. And based on raising the maximum income limit from thirty seven three ninety nine to fifty eight three ninety nine, we lost about eight and a half million dollars from the assessors from the assessment.
What we normally did, sorry.
The difference between the current exemptions and the added was about a million and a half. So it was it was a total a total of ten million and eight and eight and a half was attributable to that change. And we and we about doubled the number of exemptions.
And there's still no way to tell, even though changing to adjusted gross income might not be a huge number in itself, but I suppose for the same reasons you couldn't tell last year, you still have no way to tell
Correct.
what the next group A would be.
We don't we we don't have access to income with regard to department taxation and finance. They keep that very close to the vest so they can share with us some folks that may or may not be eligible. And we do reach out to them annually, but I could come back to you next year at this time and I would be happy to.
Right, and it's a question of age too, right? It's income and age and we don't have that either.
Correct. So sixty five years or older and now this is just a gross income of fifty eight.
Okay, or disability, right?
And so the disability exemption follows the same income requirement. There is no age. And what we would look at for that is a a letter from the Social Security Administration stating the disability as well as the personal.
Do we have that for any other category?
We do not.
Okay.
Josh, that eight point five million, what does that mean to the town in terms of actual dollars, assessment value totality?
That's a great question as we start to formulate our our tax rates for the twenty twenty four bill. We're gonna start that in about mid March for you. And so they should be finalized the end of March for that April first tax bill.
What was the total assessment last year?
So we were almost seven billion.
Okay. So are you making a recommendation?
So I would recommend that, so there's a couple of options as far as the social security. I would recommend accepting the legislation as written with regard to that social security benefit within the federal adjusted gross income. I would recommend adding back the IRA distribution, which would as you know, if we look at IRA distributions and folks file annually, whether it's enhanced or required to provide the prior years you had, I think that could have a negative effect on the assessables, which then would shift the tax burden onto the other way.
Okay, and there was the other option for a reverse medical.
Yes, so that is an option. We did address this last year. And at that point, I'd recommend to see what the county, so Westchester County adopted that provision. And I recommend that we wait and see just to see what's gonna happen because a lot of this stuff is a shot in the dark. And we won't know probably three to five years from soon. It's out, people certainly demand to do that, or that we agree to our to our.
Okay.
Which directly affects our.
So you're suggesting we so we include the IRA distributions but exclude the some reverse medical?
Correct.
And that, okay. And I guess the only other thing I'd have to ask is any any clue as to when they're going to stop making these changes? You know, every time we we think we're on the even keel, we make the change and they just tweak up tweak a little something and it turns out to be not so little.
You know what? There's a lot of unintended consequences when we play with exemptions and qualifications.
Yeah.
And it's it's very easy to do when it's not at the local level. See where legislation comes through and it can have negative effects right now.
Does anyone have any questions, Josh?
Yeah, Josh, what are the municipalities members aware of what they have done?
Okay, so I did reach out and so the town of North Castle and the town, the town slash village of Scarsdale has taken the same approach. Right now, it's still in its infancy, but through conversations with the assessment, with the assessors of York City and
Edford.
And Bedford as well as New York Pleasant, they are all inclined to do the same. Bedford is not. They have made up their mind as far as the IRA piece of that, but everyone else seems to be inclined.
But that's the more conservative option.
Yes, yes, correct. That that would be in line with other municipalities that are similar specifically to our.
For us. I'll just do this. Anyone else?
Instead of two types.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I personally need so clearly.
You're welcome.
So the only other thing to think about is, so we're going to put this for a public hearing for the twenty seventh, Jill?
Yes, we're just trying to work out the the dates because there is a another tweak to
Yeah.
a refuse exemption that we're just trying to, is that correct? Equal or exceed, need or exceed?
Equal. Yes, I think that works, yeah.
Okay, alright, um.
Okay, so we'll have all that ready in a in a new law for for the public hearing?
Um, right, so, yes, for um, let's make it for the twenty seventh.
Yeah, the thing about this is that we we are on a tight deadline if this if we're going to be able to capture this for the um for the past rules this year. So it has to be with the Secretary of State by April first.
April first, right.
And so working backwards, we would have to mail it to the Secretary of State by, I think, March twelfth so that that office has enough time to get to it and ratify it by April one. So then that means we don't have a meeting next week, so the next one is the twenty seventh.
And it would be.
So we have a public hearing then, and then we would keep it open for written comments through March fourth. And then we would have to adopt it March fifth and then
March fifth, right.
Okay.
And if we're if we're one week later than that, then someone will have to drive to Albany. Christina, so it's not, yeah.
To Christina. Um, and hopefully, you know, the comments we get back will allow us to reasonably close the public hearing by by March fourth. So we can adopt by the fifth.
Is this two, is this actually two separate hearings or is this one?
So one was, one would be for the low income disability and the other would be for the low income senior?
Well, we had we had one for the two and then we did separate one for the refuse.
When the refuse, the refuse.
Okay.
Separate, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So then two, yeah, okay.
That would.
And 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 just to be clear, the refuse change would be to change it to be equal to
Equal, yeah, words, yes.
the the new law, the 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 amount, the income maximum would be.
Correct.
Shall not e- shall not be equal to or exceed.
Would equal to this, yeah.
Yeah. The amount provided.
To this language, okay.
Right, sure, alright.
Okay, sorry, assessor stuff is Greek.
Italian.
Uh, so that'll be the public hearing and
Yeah, so.
Beyond that, Josh, how do we explain this to to people? How do they know that they might be eligible? You know, assuming I'm assuming we'll pass the law. And how do you let people know in this short amount of time? How's going?
So what we're going to do, we we've already sent out renewal applications for low income senior. We currently do not have any low income disability folks on our assessment role at this time. Um, with that in mind, I'm gonna hold the renewal applications for the refuse. So when those folks get it, they're gonna have an opportunity to read through that. Um, I'm also happy to provide a blurb for your newsletter and we can send it out that way.
Could you do that for my newsletter? Because I'd like to be able to explain it in a succinct and accurate of a way.
Yes.
And I don't want to to misrepresent everything, anything, trying to make a short word, so if you could if you could do that, that's appreciated.
I will do that.
Okay.
This is the language you speak.
Great, thank you very much. Okay.
Great.
Do you play the assessors?
Great.
Yeah.
To town supervisor newsletter, please.
I don't want to try to speak as.
Not that there's anything.
Alright, anyone else have any any questions on this?
No.
That's that.
Let's see, what time is it?
It's like it is.
Seven thirty, okay, so we we don't have to wait?
We will.
Right into the town board meeting.
And so we're just adding something to the consent agenda.
We can still move into the town board.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Jill, are you ready for us? Okay, may I have a motion to move into the town board meeting?
So.
Second, all in favor? Hi, hi, okay.
I think.
Hi.
So now, everyone, welcome still to our town board meeting. I just um want to wish everyone an early Valentine's Day. Hope you have a good day tomorrow. Um, I also want to thank Bart Carey and all of the DPW guys for um all the work they do on these snow days for us. Um, it's really very much appreciated. They were out since one AM this morning getting the roads ready and plowing and I I just want to say how how much we appreciate all their work. Um, and Jill, do you have any announcements or administrators report?
The only thing I just, um, I'm I'm hoping that everybody signed up for the EO groups today and were notified that Santa Pro had canceled collections for today. So as a result, the schedule has been bumped today. So if you were supposed to be picked up today, your refuse will be picked up tomorrow. Wednesday will be picked up on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, and Friday, Saturday. So we'll all be finished by the end of the week, but you're not gonna get any of that information in a timely manner unless you sign up for EO groups, so please sign up.
Okay.
Um, that's all I have, thank you.
I have a question about the refuse adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
If you use the recycle right app, that usually tells you when it's gonna be, is it gonna be reflected in that or is it override it? Sorry, Jill, I didn't mean to like.
I'm, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I don't, I have no access to recycle right app, so I have no ability to um
Okay. I didn't know if you.
to take and adjust that now, so they would like to
Okay.
It stands to reason if you know anything about municipal operations, like our recycling center was closed today. It was closed because those are the guys that go out and plow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know that recycle right reflects any of that, we'll need to re-enclose it.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't actually know who inputs that information. Is that Santa Pro?
I actually don't know. Um, I just know that it usually told me when to put the trash out, so.
Yeah, no, mm.
I was, I should not trust it this.
Yeah, not this week, okay, until we find that out.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, one thing I forgot to mention is that we don't have a meeting next week, just to let everyone know. It's to coincide with the with the school winter break. So our next meeting will be on the twenty seventh.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that takes us to public comment and new business. Is there anyone online for public comment? I don't, no one here. Anyone online, Lauren?
Yeah, we have one hand raised, one second.
Okay.
Alright, Ronald, you should be able to speak.
Ronald, hello, can you?
Hello.
Hey, Ron.
Can you hear me?
Hello. Yes, we can hear you, welcome.
Hello, everyone.
You can state your name and the town you reside in.
There we go. Yes, hi, Ron Steinverzal, and while I am a Newcastle resident in Austin on Hobbs Cross, I'm here tonight on behalf of Rick and Maureen Rogers from Overlook Road, clients of our firm Steinverzal Levy, thirty four South Broadway, White Plains, New York. We had written on behalf of the Rogers to Ms. Shapiro back in October with respect to the filming co- the filming law on the in the town code. We had hoped to have had a chance to present to the board prior to the passage of the amendment that happened a couple of months ago. And no doubt it was noticed on the town website. We we had trusted that we would have been alerted given our prior letter, but in any event, I wanted to raise with the board the need for further amendment. The, this really comes down to a private property right that the town board seems to have legislated away. The amendment itself, I believe, is unclear. The lead paragraph of section sixty five two was amended and it was recited in the in the amendment. And that lead paragraph was originally followed by five exceptions, A through E. Um, C and D relating to criminal investigations and things done under town sponsorship are recited in the amendment as unchanged. A and B are not referenced at all. And E, the private property right exception, which is a term I am assigning to it and it is not otherwise anointed in any way. The private property right exception that was sixty five two E, the amendment goes out of its way to say that's deleted. Doesn't address A or B, repeats C and D unchanged. I I I suggest that perhaps that has created further ambiguity in this law. But in our letter and in that amendment, perhaps the most salient issue, as I mentioned, is that regarding private property rights. There's no doubt that filming, as it's broadly defined, could have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. There's no doubt that that activity should be regulated. There's no doubt uh that a permit should be required in some situations and the numerosity and frequency of those permits should also be regulated. But there's also no doubt that there are some activities that should not be regulated. And there are now even more activities that are regulated that I'm not sure the board recognizes is they have just made violations, subjecting people to five thousand dollar penalties. And I don't think those things should be violations. I think that if you are conducting activities on your property and certainly within your home and you are not impacting anybody, you should be left to do what you're doing, subject to certain reasonable limitations, like for instance, criminal laws, of course. And uh, a- and for instance, the uh, the the town code permits you to operate a business out of your home. It can't be the primary use of the home. There are certain other limitations that generally go to nuisance standards, which is effectively what the private property exception at sixty five two E used to state. That somebody can conduct filming as broadly defined on their private property, inside or out, so long as it does not create a nuisance. I'm paraphrasing, of course, but it used the term uh, will not result in temporary adverse impacts. I think that's a very fair standard. And I think that that respects people's private property rights as well as the rights of the neighbors and the town. But the way the law now stands, things that are now violations are taking photos of a used item and listing it on eBay or Chappaqua Moms. Taking personal photos even at your own home and using them as part of a campaign for a political office like town board or supervisor. Taking a TikTok or YouTube video showing people how to bake a cake or solve a math problem. Those are commercial purposes, those are educational purposes. And if anyone knows, you know, an influencer, I don't know who those people are, but I hear about them all the time. If you're taking TikTok or YouTube videos and you're an influencer, you're getting paid for it. And even though nobody knows you're doing it and no one should have a concern about it, it's now a violation punishable up to five thousand dollars.
So Ron, let me um, oh, sorry, I I don't mean to cut you uh
No, by all means, please.
I I think we're we're perfect, we're perfectly willing to take a look at this law. We passed it last year. Uh, we're perfectly willing to take another look at it again, but just to be clear, we're talking about property in a residential area where the primary use of the property has been to film, I believe, right? The owners do not live there and they use it primarily for filming, is that correct?
Well, I think we're talking about the law and the law shouldn't, we shouldn't be legislating based on individuals.
Right.
But if you wanted to talk about my clients and why I'm here tonight, my clients do live in this home. This is their primary residence. They do list this address on their federal and state taxes.
Okay, all right. I was I was just trying to clarify what the situation was and to see what the discrepancy was between what we were trying to accomplish last year and what the actual um circumstances are. So um, I don't mean to cut you short, you can please continue with the public comment, but I just want to let you know that we're willing to take a look at this law based on your feedback. We'll have our attorneys look at it. And um, you know, we're happy to get back to you. Regarding changes.
I I thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
And I really, I I it it's, I think it's very important to keep in mind that this is while this is, this issue has come about as all issues do because of an occurrence. It it has brought to light an issue that is applicable as all laws are across all persons and properties, right? And uh, and and I I I wanted to list a few of those things, not in a tongue in cheek manner at all, but in hopes that people recognize that this law now create, puts us all, makes us all scofflaws. I don't know a lot of houses where no one's ever tried to sell anything on eBay or Chappaqua Moms. Or a lot of houses where, I mean, if I take a photo from my law firm's website in my home and I put it on my website, I owe the town five thousand dollars.
We're going, we'll take a look at that, Ron, and uh, you know, we don't all have the law in front of us and are ready to go, you know, go through it word by word. We can't do that now, but we will take a look at it and we will get back to you.
I I thank you very much for that. I thank you all for your time.
Very welcome.
I thank you also for braving the roads.
Yes, they weren't so bad when we got here.
And uh
The sun was out, yeah.
and I know you have a lot more business to conduct tonight, so I will I will thank you for your time and wish you a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Ron, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, be well.
You too, okay, bye bye. Um, is there anyone else for public comment?
Uh, anybody else that would just speak can raise your hand. I don't see anybody else. You're good.
No, okay, seeing that there are no hands up, we will uh go to our resolutions. All right, Holly, ready to start?
I move to adopt items one through eight as listed on the consent agenda.
We, um, sorry, excuse me, we added uh ninth item. That's the second public hearing. And that's opposition to set a public hearing on local law regarding senior citizens exemption, section seventy two dash eight.
Okay, so I I move to adopt the items one through nine as listed on the consent.
Sorry. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of four hundred and fifty two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty four cents. Twenty twenty three expenditures totaling one hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars and forty four cents. In twenty twenty four expenditures totaling two hundred and eighty one dollars, two hundred and two hundred and eighty one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in deficit. Listened to summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail reports all dated February twelfth, twenty twenty four. Those will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, twenty twenty four.
Second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
I'm, I move to authorize the appointment of the following individuals with the corresponding terms as members of the Arts and Culture Committee and thereby extending the membership to thirteen members. Mark Lowenstein, Rachel Schmansky, Joan Shildkraut, Sherry Tamalones, Dawn Greenberg, Jennifer Lieber, all appointed to two-year terms beginning February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty six. Robert Alaski, Laura Hoffman, Lisa Nisman and Jessica Merrow- Merowitz.
And Carolyn Simpson.
And Carolyn Simpson, sorry, to one-year terms beginning February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Um, and before we vote, I just want to let any of those people listening that we had to stagger the years uh because that's best practices for any committee and any and it's a two-year term, so anyone appointed for one year now will be reappointed, but this is our way of staggering the terms for the future. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I move to authorize the appointment of the following individuals with the corresponding terms to the Airport Advisory Committee. Gregory Elders, a two-year term, February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty six. Andrew Meacham to a two-year term, same dates, February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty six, as well as Michael Korn and Yoav Cohen, two-year terms, February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty six. Move to appoint Eric Dorsh, David Katz, Asher Feinberg, Jonas Warner and James Benton to one-year terms beginning February fourteenth, twenty twenty four through February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in.
And we will be appointing Greg Elders and Andrew Meacham as co-chairs to this committee. Thank you both so much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize reappointment of still meaning an appointment of John Garfunkel as members of the Conservation Board for a two-year term effective February fourteenth of this year to February thirteenth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I move to authorize the hiring of Hannah Memmer- Memmerever for the position of student intern in the Development Department on a project basis at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour, not to exceed forty hours without further authorization effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals as recreation attendants within the Recreation of Parks Department at the corresponding rate effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Louise Cartagena uh, for youth basketball.
And uh, flag football and special events.
Uh, flag football, special events and youth basketball, and Adrian Watts, special events, youth basketball, art center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Christina, that's it for the resolutions. We don't have anything else, sorry, okay, just checking, okay.
That's a good question, yeah, no, I appreciate that, we had a good one, that was good sense, I'm sure.
Alright, uh, that does it for tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Aye. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, good night, everyone. Have a good evening and uh have a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow.